Leading to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address a commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which the action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board Meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for purposes of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation pursuant to NRS 241.053B2. Okay, I officially call this meeting to order. Lamont, you want to do the pledge of allegiance?
Yep. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 p.m. to 1:15 p.m. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration of the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Do we have any commissioners? Do we have any commissioners' reports? Mike?
No.
Lamont?
Yes, good morning. So I attended the Central Nevada Regional Water Authority meeting. Most of what was covered was the bills that passed, didn't pass through legislation. I'll just hit a few of them really quick and some of them I inquired about. The first one was SB 6, which has to do with cloud seeding. And that passed and that is going to Senate Finance right now, so I did ask for a lot of information regarding cloud seeding, SDS sheets, the frequency of seeding, also, you know, kind of how they apply it, because I think there's a lot of misconceptions, a lot of misinformation out there, good and bad, so I just kind of wanted to get all the facts so I can get it presented to everybody. There was 19 water bills in session, nine didn't even make the deadline, another 10 have fiscal notes attached to them, so it did sound like a lot of these didn't even make it. The one that I'd been bringing up before was AB 109, and that had to do with geothermal, lithium mining, kind of their closed system, their permitting process. That bill's dead, didn't even make it to a hearing, so. The other one was SB 36, which had to do with voluntary water rights retirement, and looks like that was extracted from the Senate Finance and moved to Assembly, so that's about it for meetings.
Yep. So we had a hospital board meeting the other day, and there's a few things in legislation too that if there is a bill that is $500 or less, they're trying to make it where these rural hospitals will not be able to collect on those. So right now, our hospital has 1,800 of those that are under 500, which is almost a million dollars, so that's a big thing, so we're hoping that doesn't pass or it gets vetoed because that's a ton of money for our little hospital. And the rodeo grounds out there, Mike has been working really hard on that, they have an event coming up this weekend, so if anybody needs some entertainment, go out there and watch 'em rope.
I've been watching them on Facebook, it's amazing.
Yeah, they're doing a great job.
Okay, I attended the Kingston Town Board Meeting, and they are moving forward with all their different projects. They currently have a contractor out there replacing valves and a couple of PRV valves and getting things done there, and they've picked out their new playground and they're all ready to go, and they picked out the colors and stuff, it's gonna be really nice, I'm excited for it, so. Okay, staff reports on meeting conferences and seminars attended?
Good morning, Commissioner. Myself and Brian Sparks did attend the Polpak Annual Board Meeting, and there was some good information shared there on finances and what's coming down the pike, or what they think is coming down the pike from the federal level down to us. So we'll report further on that as things kind of proceed on there. A lot of these Assembly bills, speaking with the Governor's Office, that he's going to be going in and vetoing a number of them, so some of the things that we see concerns with and maybe passing, I think the Governor's Office is gonna step in and get rid of some of them. Just letting you guys know that, because I know some of these bills do cause some pretty serious concern. Then the Austin Forest Service House, we did get the deed to that property, so I'd like to thank the Forest Service for that. They stepped up and made that happen really quick. We do have our official asking for the BLM ground, and our local BLM has asked us to give them a little additional time because they're still looking into overlapping and existing rights on some of that ground and making sure that they can legally get that over to us without causing us further problems. Everything else we have is on the agenda or will be on an upcoming one.
Okay, all right. Public comment? None? All right, moving on to this consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. Okay, so number one, approval of the April 24th Agenda Notice; two, approval of the March 13th, 2025 Meeting Minutes; three, approval of the March 26th Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes; four, approval of the March 27th Meeting Minutes; five, approval of the April 10th Meeting Minutes; and six, approval of payroll change requests. The only one we have is the agenda.
Did you guys get the minutes this morning?
Yeah, I got those.
Yeah, I got mine.
Nope, must be over there.
Oh, we found yours.
Okay.
One and two.
All right, so we want to approve one and two?
I'll motion we approve consent agenda items. Number one, approval of April 24th, 2025 Agenda Notice, and number two, approval of March 13th, 2025 Meeting Minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number one, Commissioners, 1.1, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the payment of bills. Do we have any that need to be held out?
Nope.
So I will entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the payment of bills, 1.1.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 1.2, for information only, update from SSR Marigold regarding operations, community, and Buffalo Valley project update.
All right. Get that up on the screen, there we go. Excellent, thank you. Good morning, my name is Richard Zagel, I'm the study manager out at Marigold.
My name's Jesse Bart, I'm the environmental manager at Marigold.
And I'm Anton Kruger, I'm the general manager out at Marigold.
Thanks for having us this morning. We're just gonna provide a brief update on the Marigold Mine and some future expansion opportunities that we're looking at to the south and Buffalo Valley. So we'll kick it off with kind of a brief history on the Marigold Mine itself. Construction of the modern-day open pit Marigold Mine began in 1988. It was a small operation, a couple of years of mine life, and included a small mill with a carbon and leach circuit, well, mill and an autoclave. The mill operated for about 10 years, and then when the economics around the gold price changed, the mill was scrapped and the mine changed to a full run-of-mine heap leach. So now we just, we drill it, blast it, and put it right on leach pad and leach it, so we've been doing that since about 1999. We now employ about 485 people, and our mine fleet has grown progressively. Now we use some of the largest haul trucks in the world, as well as four shovels. And the images kind of just illustrate the progression as well. The mine now, or the Marigold Mine Plan of Operations is just under 26,000 acres, about 40 square miles, and we just poured our 5 millionth ounce of gold in December. The yellow stars that are popping up here indicate each millionth ounce of gold that was poured. We're also a signatory to the International Cyanide Management Code. We were actually the first operating mine to achieve that certification in 2007, and that's what that red star was that popped up there.
Just as a brief overview of our operation, as you can see on the chart on the far top left-hand side, pretty consistent production at around about 200,000 ounces a year. The last year and this year is a little bit lower than the norm because we are in a pre-stripping phase, we're taking off overburden on one of the new cutbacks to expose the ore. Our mining rates have sort of steadily increased, just with haulage distances increased over time and it's getting slightly deeper, so this year we're looking at roughly about 330,000 tons a day being mined. From an overall ore reserve perspective, we're sitting at roughly 2 million ounces in reserve. That gives us nominally a mine life of roughly another 10 years. So all up a large, low-grade, fairly sustainable open pit that's been in operation, as Jesse said, for the last 35 years, with lots of future opportunities.
So I want to give a little bit of an update as to where we're at on advancing our Buffalo Valley project. So Buffalo Valley is a historic underground and open pit mine that's just to the southwest of Marigold. You can see on that map on the right side of that, we're kind of in between us and the Phoenix Mine on the southern side of our property boundary down there. Came with a whole land package that we acquired from Newmont/Fairmyl Gold back in 2019 that was called the Project Sterling Properties, so that had the North Peak Heat Leach, North Peak Pit, Shritten Canyon, and then Buffalo Valley. So in 2023, we put all those projects through an initial assessment phase, kind of see if any of these things are something that we want to chase, and Buffalo Valley is really the one that rose to the top, is something that we'd like to move forward with. So 2024, 2025, we did a pre-feasibility study on it, which just wrapped up in the first quarter of this year, and in this year, we're really kicking off into the feasibility work, so that feasibility study is going on now and should complete sometime early next year, 2026. The plan with that is to have a plan of operations and get into the NEPA process at the end of this year, sometime in the fourth quarter, to get that permitted. That would put us getting into detailed design in '26, '27, construction of the infrastructure out there for Buffalo Valley in '28, '29, and hopefully the first pour in 2029. Also of note, so we declared the maiden reserve, the first reserve ounces were declared in the first quarter of this year, so pretty excited about that, it's turning into a real future for Marigold. So you can see the historic pit on the bottom left there, looking to the northwest in that image. Real quick on geology, I will not bore you all to tears on this screenshot here, but the biggest point being that it's significantly different from what we see at Marigold. It's kind of more of a cross between us and Phoenix that's to the south of us. It's a scarn with some Carlin overprint, it's definitely a little bit different in some ways, it's a little bit more crush-sensitive of rock, but the current plan that we're looking at, we're actually not going to crush the ore itself, we're just gonna do a run-of-mine heap, just like what we do at Marigold. It's a little bit more silver down there, a little bit more copper than what we've seen at Marigold, but nothing too different, but there's been a lot of work trying to figure out exactly what those differences are and what they mean for the operation. On the processing side, the current design that we're coming out with the pre-feasibility study is a cascade CIC configuration, so really similar to what we run at Marigold, it'll be a large run-of-mine heap leach with a CIC on the back end. Current design is around 8,000 GPM. There won't be any carbon processing there, you know, it's pretty far away from Marigold, it's about 10 miles away from the road that we're gonna have to construct between Buffalo Valley and Marigold, but far enough that we can load the carbon with gold there at Buffalo Valley and then ship the carbon up to Marigold to get refined and further processed there, and then bring new carbon back down to run. So some ponds, CICs, and a large heap leach. The heat leach facility itself, like I said, just because of the distance, we can't use the heap leach facility at Marigold, we're gonna have to construct a new one, so there is a new heap leach in the design down there. It's a pretty decent size, mostly to facilitate the time under leach that this rock needs, that's a big difference from Marigold, it needs probably double the time to sit under leach to get the same kind of recovery, so the base area of that heap leach is pretty big. We did a lot of work around this heap leach facility and the waste dumps as well, a new seismic study for the region, a lot of geotechnical analysis and third-party review on that to ensure stability of all of those phases and everything, and that's gonna develop even further into the feasibility engineering and detailed engineering after that. This is a preliminary site layout of what came out of the pre-feasibility work. So in the upper left there, you can see I've just zoomed in on the carbon columns and then the leach pad. There are the ribs, so those are rapid infiltration basins, so in the current plan that we have, the last few benches of the pit, which is over on the right-hand side there, the last few benches are currently underwater from the water table as we understand it, so there would be dewatering associated with this project. We probably can't use all of that water for makeup on the heap from the water balance we've done so far, between the water balance on the heap leach and then dust mitigation water, so we'll have to get rid of some of the excess dewatering water into those rapid infiltration basins. That might not be the final location of them, we're doing some work in this year, early on, to understand if that's the best spot, there's a few alternative locations we're looking at as well. There is a small crusher, like I said, we're not gonna crush the ore, but we'll have a crusher out there for project work, for construction, road, rock stemming, things like that, really similar to what we have at Marigold, we have a small crusher that we use for projects like that, but we don't actually crush the ore. And then a large overburden storage area and growth media storage area, that's something that we split out on purpose to have growth media storage a little bit further up the hill to ensure that anything we can use for reclamation is easily accessible, you know, we're always thinking about closure even before the mine has started and how we can really make sure that reclamation is easy. So that's the site layout. A lot of this last year's worth of work has been around permitting and understanding what's gonna be, what we're gonna have to do for closure. Right now, there's the potential to have a pit lake, like I said, the last few benches are underwater, and if we leave it open, there could be a pit lake there in perpetuity. We're looking at both options with this, so there's nothing that's really been decided. We are doing all of the pit lake study work, all the geochemical work to understand what that would mean if we're gonna leave a pit lake there in perpetuity, but we're also exploring the option of backfilling and not having to deal with a pit lake as well. That's kind of an optimal option for us, it's something we've been working with the BLM with here in town, it's an optional option for them as well, and we'll certainly keep it in mind, but we're exploring both options. There's some sage grouse habitat in there, so we've been looking at that and understanding what we're gonna have to do for mitigation there as well. Like I said, dewatering is definitely gonna be necessary in the current plan, but all that will get described in the NEPA documentation later on this year. Public land access is also obviously very important, there is gonna be a decent-sized road that has to be built between Marigold and Buffalo Valley to get equipment down there, to get people back and forth and all of that, so we wanna make sure that we're not obstructing public access to any public land down there. Been working with stakeholders here in town and Winnebago as well to really make sure we understand what that is and we can minimize that impact. And then reclamation, of course, I mean, obviously we wanna return the area to pre-mining uses whenever everything is complete with mining there. We're open to any other reclamation strategies that better align with the community interest out there, anything we would wanna do differently, we're always open to what people might wanna do. And just a bit more on the progress on permitting and the baseline studies, so a lot of different studies going on, paleo-cultural, biological, some of these have been completed for the PFS stage, a lot of them are continuing on into work for 2025. Some of these are pretty long studies that have to be done. A lot of work in this last year, especially on geochemistry and hydrology, we've been out there putting in vibrating wire piezometers, monitoring wells to understand groundwater conditions as they are right now, where the groundwater levels are going to be, the CCS data studies around the sage grouse, all of those things, so there's a lot of work on this side. And then just a timeline over there on the right to kind of show where we're at currently in getting all these baselines put together, trying to put together the plan of operations. We selected a NEPA contractor that we're working with, and like I said, hoping to get into the NEPA process by the end of this year, which will be a few years, and then towards the end of that timeline, there's a lot of overlap with state permitting, water pollution control permit, air permitting, and all those things too, kind of the standard timeline, so. That's the update that we have for you today. Certainly happy to take any questions.
Does anybody on the board have questions?
Just quick, just for information, so the roads you're talking about building from Marigold to Buffalo Valley, those mostly for your carbon trucks up and down the road, or, I mean?
It's also for mining equipment, so one of the benefits of Buffalo Valley is because of the size, we have extra hours with our current life online on some of the shovels and some of the trucks at Marigold, so that equipment can be utilized to go down and mine Buffalo Valley once it's permitted to the south, but we need a road for that stuff to get there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be for haul trucks to get the shovels down there at least one time, shovel or shovels, and then, yeah, to get manpower back and forth in the carbon truck.
possibly four years. If we integrate Buffalo Valley into the existing Marigold Life of Mine Plan and use same equipment, same people, and share the mining across all the resources, that probably shrinks down to about another one to two years' worth of additional mining.
Okay, so you're like, 11 to 12 years?
Yeah.
Okay, at this stage.
Yeah.
Does the public have any questions? None?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Okay, 1.3, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove moving forward with the design and begin drafting the development agreement for Summit Edge Development and the proposed master plan for Lander County Industrial Rail Park.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, for the record, I'm Sheldon Mudd, Executive Director of the Northeastern Nevada Regional Development Authority. So with the dissolution of Battle Mountain Hydrogen's project out there west of town at the rail park, we got after it as quick as we could to try to find an alternative to occupy that space once it's up and running and ready, ready to go. And so I had reached out to some folks that we were already working with on a project in, up in Jackpot, and that is Summit Edge Development. We are working towards the development of some housing projects up there, and Taylor can get into that if you're interested, looks like that's gonna be greenlit, and I think we'll be moving dirt here in the next few weeks, hopefully, on that. But in regards to this, I had mentioned what was going on here in Lander County, and they took special interest in that as a potential developer out on the west side of town, and so they took a look at the property, the area as a whole, and essentially developed a plan out there that they would like to propose to the commission and to the community today. Taylor and his team have a lot of contacts, especially on the Wasatch front there in Salt Lake area, as it pertains to possible tenants that could occupy this, and we'll let Taylor talk about that a little bit more, and maybe integrate it into some of their projects that they already have going throughout the Intermountain West. And so this looks like a promising crew, like say we work with them with some other projects, they have some proven projects over in Utah, and I'm happy to introduce the commission and the community to Mr. Taylor Bennett of Summit Edge Development.
Appreciate that, Sheldon. Do we by chance have the presentation, with the slides?
I will be able to bring it up for you, you'll just have to tell me when to go to the next slide.
That's okay. Yes, ma'am. That's okay.
It is, Larry.
As Sheldon said, my name is Taylor Bennett, I'm one of the partners of Summit Edge Development, and I am co-partnered with Kason Acor and John Hogan. A little bit of background about our partnership, I think that's important, is John Hogan comes from over 35 years of commercial general contracting. He currently qualifies for a larger construction group based out of Las Vegas, he qualifies at Arizona Market for them, and works with them currently. Kason is an industrial, commercial, real estate agent, specializes in commercial real estate, and has built practice back in Salt Lake, Utah area, up and down the Wasatch. I personally come from a background of accounting, so I occasionally am a number cruncher, but also am a little scared to get up and talk on occasion. With that, I come from residential home building. Our team has a breadth of skill that kind of covers all different elements that are needed whenever engaging in a rural development, particularly one of project and scope potentially as big as this size. If we can move to the next slide. As Sheldon mentioned, the property we are looking at, we have the property ID and information up there, it's here in Battle Mountain, and it's the Industrial Rail Park, that is where the rail spur currently is going in there off the rail. 300 acres is what we are looking to develop on, and our purpose here today is to begin the conversation and look for an approval from you as to begin a development agreement with the county, and how we go about protecting the county's interests and bringing this development forward and making it a success here for the county, for the community, and for all those involved. If we can go to the next slide. One more down, please. Thank you. This project, we hope, will expand far past a Phase 1. There are other parcels of land that we'd look to as a Phase 2 and a Phase 3, and we do intend this to be a long-term partnership with the county. We understand it will take many, many years, decades, to fully develop and bring this project fully online, and we're looking to be that prime developer and partner for the county. We can go to the next slide. We have put together kind of a site plan that you're welcome to review and take a look at. As a part of our site plan, one of the things I'd like to draw attention to is we actually chunked up different parts of the parcel of the land there, sections, you can see it's sectioned out on the northeast, central, southwest, and that northwest corner. We understand the other implications of a high water table, maybe the soil, and all that will come to light during the process of, you know, doing soil samples and things of the nature there as we go through due diligence. But we're aware that by chunking up the land, it actually will help us avoid, kind of deterring any potential tenants, both big and small. And so as we intend to market this with this site map, as vendors and potential operators look to come in and participate in this community, they'll be able to see, okay, there's plenty of room for me to build what I need, and will also be creating an opportunity for it to be scaled down to meet their necessary needs, and for them to take advantage of the rail. If we can go to the next slide, please. This project's gonna have a lot of wins, and it's gonna have a lot of challenges. It's a great piece of land, but there's some natural things that we're gonna have to tackle, one of being the soil and the high water table which I spoke about. Even the infrastructure upgrades, to bring on something this size, infrastructure's gonna be huge, and we have a strategy for that, on how we approach that. There are certain businesses, industries, that are used to taking on instances where infrastructure has to be upgraded significantly, and those are the type of businesses we intend to attract, also ones that don't require massive amounts of labor, because we understand the constraints potentially in the housing market. To bring in a big operator that requires a lot of laborers would put a significant immediate To bring in a big operator that requires a lot of laborers, would put a significant immediate pressure in housing. And although it can scale, it keeps prices a little bit too high when you're looking for workforce housing, in particular. The type of tenants we're looking to attract, uh, vary. We've put together a handful there that potentially would see this, this, uh, location, this hub, and be of very good interest on the warehousing, if we can go to the next one. Same thing goes for cold storage. Because the unique location we have here, um, you're a day's train out of Oakland, and there's a lot of opportunity, particularly within cold storage, for those items to be housed here, freighted down, dropped, and, um, exported from that, from there. Data centers is one of kind of the different areas that we've identified would potentially be a good fit here. And we've started conversations with NV Energy, and have started the process of understanding what it would take to pursue a, for example, a power purchase agreement, and, um, securing the right amount of power and secondary power for data centers potentially, potentially in this location. One of the things we do whenever we go into rural communities is we truly try to assess the impacts, the ripple effects we have with the things that we do. One of those is housing. Having my background been in residential housing, we understand that keeping things affordable to keep attracting people in, and not alienate potential industries from coming in because they're worried about a labor shortage. One of those ways we do that is we partner with manufactured home manufacturers, and we work with them to bring in, um, and put on less than quarter acre lots, homes that are affordable, that can scale up. Particularly under construction, corporate housing agreements can be executed as well, to help keep flowing in this contractor base when necessary, as we scale up a project of this size over many, many years. Keeping it affordable, well, let's keep it right there, please, thank you. Keeping it affordable is one of the issues, but also job placement assistance. Um, whenever you have attracted workforce that's coming in, you have to have a conduit. You have to have more or less a conveyor belt that's helping make the friction easier, so that they're not showing up here, maybe with a house, but without a job, or vice versa. If we can go to the next one. So, one of the things we do is we look at the full kind of flywheel effect. And the different elements here is, you have your commercial development, which creates job creation, and the labor demand goes up, and the housing demand goes up, but there's the human capital element. And so, we put together a veteran placement program that we actually work with veteran groups, um, nonprofit groups specifically, that help veterans who are, um, retiring from service, and they're in their post-service phase of life, and they're looking for a community very similar to one like this, where it's calm, it's quiet, and they're looking for a house and a job. Coming from a technological background as well, we build proprietary software that we keep in-house, that we actually work with these veterans groups. Um, they share the information about the different locations, and these veterans go in and apply. That application then facilitates interaction with HR, job recruiters for the local economies, as well as with the different housing options, and acts as that conveyor belt, and reduces the friction, helps kind of almost reel in the labor as a part of our development program. If we can go to the next slide. And that's depicted here. At the end of the day, it helps them find a job and a house before they've even potentially even been here. If we go to the next slide. We partnered with Invetment to do that. Um, it's a Texas-based group, and that is their ethos. They are committed to finding affordable housing options and jobs for retired veterans. And I'm willing to take any questions, and thank you for your time.
Questions? None?
Not at this time.
I see you have notes over there.
Yeah, I do. I, I'm just curious, um, so, when you, if, if you, if this was approved for you to do this, how are you, I know you said you were prepared to bring in housing, which we've had that before, and it hasn't been real successful. I mean, we end up, um, this over here was Echo Bay that you can see. Um, how do you plan on keeping that, if you do bring in that housing that way? How you plan on doing the infrastructure for that, because you're gonna have to have sidewalks and water and all that? And?
Correct.
So, I'll answer that first.
So, it'll be just be part of, you know, whenever you do a development, um, the, on all the different elements of the housing, the, the biggest thing is that we'd be looking to work with the county on that. Um, this is kind of something that we're looking to partner together on. And so, there's gonna be communication between us and you about where we can best take advantage of current infrastructure. How do we best navigate these waters? We're not gonna just pick up a parcel of land at random, um, and just try to make it work and underwrite that. There's gonna be a lot of conversation. Ultimately, if we're doing the commercial development, we're gonna be working very closely together, um, because of this, because of this project. And so, that's where we'd be looking to kind of understand, okay, we've just done massive infrastructure upgrades over here for commercial. What are, what's, what's reasonable, where can we go? And I don't have all those answers today, to be honest with you, but those will unfold together as we work together on this project. And, you know, and the, the interesting thing about it is, as we create the more job demands, you know, there will be a fluctuation in housing crisis, but, um, the demand will skyrocket, and eventually you'll have the ability to underwrite those. And there's other people here I know that are in the area that currently own land and are expecting to develop on that land. Um, and our hopes is, is that they succeed in all this. This is not just a Summit Edge, um, benefit project, this is a community benefit. And I, we've had people reach out to us and share their interest, trying to understand timelines and expectations. And, uh, we don't know all that, because we still gotta do a development agreement. But we have signaled to them that our intentions are over here on the commercial, and that where housing is needed, and we can step in and help, we will. But it is not a, it is, it is something we all will benefit together on.
Have, have you had any, um, are you just, is your only solution modular homes, or are you looked at stick-built?
When we, when we typically propose housing from our end of things, there will be those that will do stick-built and higher-end homes that will fit management and other elements of the area. We are looking for, uh, very specific solutions, so modular, or manufactured homes is one of them. Uh, we've looked at modular, uh, there's conversations to be had there. And as far as stick-built, we do have plans and architectural drawings that are, that keep things affordable. We're looking to keep things down in that workforce housing bracket, if you will. Um, we're not looking to venture out into custom home building out here. Um, there will be great other general contractors that will be able to pursue that. So, we do have other options, um, but they're usually verticalized, and they're very simple-type homes. Single-family starter homes that we'd be looking to put in.
Right. Um, another one. If you bring laborers in, how many, how many laborers will it take to build the facility?
Great question. It depends on what the market will dictate on what facility gets going first. Um, data centers are a big endeavor, and they take several years, right? Um, there's a lot of work that goes into those. As far as the headcount as to what it would be, you can expect that there would probably be, you know, at any given time, a turning rate of a hundred plus to a couple hundred different laborers that would be coming in and out of here. Standing up a good housing solution, um, and working with you on that, again, and understanding what the community wants to see, uh, in the county, would be how we'd probably approach that. But, yeah, you would, you'd, you'd have quite a bit of inflow and outflow.
One more, sorry.
Don't worry.
And, and when, when you bring those laborers in, how do you plan to, um, partner with Lander County? Because we've had that before, and it's impacted our hospitals, our sheriff's office, where, when Fleur came in, they were overworked, and the hospital took a big hit financially. So, that would be one of my concerns, because when you bring all those people in from other places, um, that impacts us a lot.
And I totally understand that. And I think it's, uh, it's gonna be, that's a really good question. It's a lot of communication, letting you guys know upfront so that you can plan as much as you can. Um, ultimately, if we wanna grow, um, the, you know, and pursue this industrial park together, there are gonna be some things that, um, we're just gonna have to work really closely on that we won't be able to avoid. Um, and planning for that is how we avoid the, the consequential impacts as much as possible. And so, you bringing up instances where you guys have had these issues in the past, then it's a synergistic conversation. How do we alleviate that moving forward? If we wanna pursue this together, what can we do now? And what can we do? What can you do? And that's, that's really our ethos, and hopefully that shines through in the conversation today.
Any other questions?
So, what you're asking for today is to get authorized, you're asking us to approve you to be the management company of this rail park, right?
Ultimately, we intend to be the prime developer, yes. And so, we'd be overseeing the establishment of the management of the rail park and the management of the industrial park.
And what, i- is it just, e- every, everything so far has been discussion? I, I haven't really heard kind of a plan. I'd like to see further plan before I would support it, but, um, off of that, what, I, I mean, so what, i- in the end, if you're the manager of it, what say does the county have in this? I mean, versus us buying different managements, you know, offering other management solutions to offer, like, not total, you're, you're asking for total control, right?
No, that's actually incorrect. A development agreement protects your interest. Um, we're not asking for total control, we're asking for collaboration. We're asking to pursue a development agreement with you. And in a development agreement, you would be able to spell out, um, where your role belongs, and what, what needs to protect the county's interest. Rights of precision are all gonna be in there. We're not asking to, for you to give us wholesale everything, and trust us to just show up here and make this appear out of nowhere. No, it's gonna be a process and a development agreement, working together to make sure the details are in there, to protect interests like that. Um, that's what we're after today, is that approval to pursue that.
Any other questions, Sean? I have a couple. Okay, so you want us to donate this land to you. We've spent a fortune already getting Israel, Haiti, and all of this.
Yeah.
And so, when this is all said and done, and you're going to bring in the warehouses, and you're going to be leasing all of that out, where does that leave Lander County? We just gave away thousands of, tens of thousands of dollars for nothing.
If, you know, that's, that's totally understandable. As a part of the, what we're seeking is it would help, it helps with underwriting. There's a lot of horizontal, as we refer to it, infrastructure expenses that are gonna have to be handled on this. And, um, we're happy to go deeper into that as a part of the development agreement. Uh, happy to go into that and share that with you, and help, you know, understand some elements of it. But the land as it, as it stands right now, if you're able to give that to us, ultimately, the benefit back to you is the, the tax of the business, the growth, the tax base. It helps us move faster with underwriting.
And you want it to be proprietary? You wanna be able to carry on once you get through with Phase One? You want us to hold Phase Two and Three areas for you as proprietary?
If we meet the milestones that you set in with the development agreement, that would be our ask. Yes, ma'am.
So, if anybody else wanted to come in, they'd just be, what happens if we go ahead and lease out the area that you consider Phase Three?
That would, again, we'd work all that, those details out in the development agreement as to what that would look like. But, again, my understanding is, and having talked with different members of the county, is that your goal is, is to bring on a, a, a new commercial hub, if you will. Um, here, to help support and grow the community, um, into the future, into the next, you know, hundred years, if you will. We're here to help bring that to light, and we understand the implications of what we're stepping into and the responsibility, and that, yeah, we will be the prime on it. Ultimately, though, it doesn't guarantee, you guys will set the, together, will set the guardrails as to what is, what is winning in your eyes. And if we are winning, our ask is, is you give us the ability to keep winning.
And so, for the housing areas that you're looking at, are you planning on trying to put your housing in around this, which is, uh, what, an extreme flood zone area, and the sewer ponds are over there, and it's not a flood zone area?
It's not Zone Four housing, so that wouldn't be an available area.
Right, that's, where, where are you looking at for the housing? Are you gonna buy from one of our developers?
Poten- potentially, or maybe they'll be doing the development. Um, the point is, is we're not ignoring the problem that this will create.
Right.
And we'll work to solve it. But as far as exactly what parcel's the land I own right this minute, um, I, none, and I don't have an immediate solution, uh, at this exact moment. But, here's the thing that we've proven with working with other counties, is that you can give us something that's very difficult, and we will figure it out. And that's, this land is, got a great, I appreciate the investment. Don't get me wrong, we're not ignoring that. We want success for everyone. Um, there's gonna be a good amount of work, and we're willing to come in and do it. And it's exciting, it's exciting for everyone. And there's a pathway forward that we see.
Bert, do you have any comments?
I, I got one more. What, uh, so what other rail park developments have you guys taken?
Good question, it's a good question. Rail park developments are large developments. Average time span of a rail park development is twenty, thirty years, right, depending on where it's located. In this particular instance, we have the talent within our team and the capability within our investor pool who invest in projects like this, who know what we're doing, different aspects. Have we done every little aspect that will go into this development? No. But our, our broader base of connections, investors, and, um, interested people in our partnership as well, will have that skill. And that is what we bring to the table. It's not just ourselves, it's a communal effort that will be brought to bear on this.
So, you haven't really been like, the, the major player in any of the, the current ones, Fernley's going on, other states?
Correct, yes, so. But our partnerships, for example, on the construction, Arco Design Build, they build in these areas all the time. And we work very closely with them. In fact, Arco is the one who designed that site map that we're looking at today. So, we're very quick to pull in the right people. Ultimately, as a developer, you're overseeing the entire project, ensuring that the right people are in the right place, and that's what we do.
Okay, Felician, any more questions?
I don't have any questions, but just, as far as comments from me, um, I like a lot of the things I hear. Um, I do, I do believe we got, those, those industries that you're talking about will come in. Um, I'd like, I would like to hear from some other developers as well. I don't believe we're in a, in a situation right now where we can commit as of today, so, um, you guys know a lot of work, there's a lot of hard work by everybody's gone into this. And I don't believe that today is the day that we're gonna sign off on three hundred acres to donate, you know, and, and have that locked up. But, um, I'm also not believing we're disproving it today, disapproving it today. So, my, my comments on this are, um, I just think it's too early to commit an approval for, for a development agreement, that's my opinion. But I like a lot of the things I hear. We do need a lot, everything that you just said. Um, I believe it's gonna be bright and profitable, but we only get one chance to do this right, and I believe we need to talk to everybody. So, m- my opinion is, 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 you know, I, I love, I like the presentation, I like, you know, the, what you're saying, but I, I don't believe we're in a position today to approve, to just hand over three hundred acres of, of our, of our future right now.
And I, I agree with that. We're still pretty early in the stage of this, so.
Okay, Bert?
Yeah, we've had, uh, um, a few meetings with, with Summit Edge and seen some of their, um, presentations. The one that they showed you guys today, we, we've seen that as well. Um, I had asked them previously to maybe bring this back into, into some smaller bites with some expectations as opposed to, uh, full-on master plan for the site itself. Um, I think that, that that's probably a great thing to have and, and work forward, you know, with, you know, with plan in mind. The, the concern is, is, is what Commissioner Chop pointed out, is in, in our meetings is, um, what, what I gathered, and what, what's a little bit different from today, is that they would be the gatekeeper, more or less, for what comes in. They would kind of vet the, those who come to them to fit into their master plan that they would design for this rail park. Um, and we have to remember, this hasn't been advertised even on UP's site yet, and, and we already have quite a bit of interest. Um, I think these guys will be a great fit at some point. I just have concern with us jumping in as early without some very clear defined, which, which sounds like you guys may be asking for, is, um, the development agreement, like a smaller, a smaller bite. Uh, but I think that this commission and, and staff probably should see what you guys have in mind for that development agreement, so we can say, well, th- these are kind of our milestones, and we haven't seen any of that yet. So, I, that's my concern. I, I definitely want us to have in mind what their development agreement would look like, and then we can make some modifications to try to fit what we have in mind.
I agree.
So, can we treat this as a, as a presentation, so we don't really need possible action today? Is that what I'm hearing?
It says we have possible action.
It says for discussion, so, I mean, we've had the discussion.
You can always choose, I mean, that's part of your powers. You can always choose whether or not you're gonna approve something. And if you think it needs more time, then take more time.
You know, because if we, if we approve this, this development agreement, and we wanna hear other development agreement, we wanna hear other peoples, you know, we, we don't wanna be committed to, to several people.
That's why I asked if it was proprietary, because that locks us in with you guys permanently, with no other options.
Bill, I, am I right today to say this is, this, if I make? Bill, I, am I right today to say this is, this, if I make a motion, is to disapprove moving forward with design and, and drafting development? Or is it the table? I kind of misunderstood you there. I mean, today, we're asking to, we were asked to give them the goal, right? By this, the way I'm reading this?
You were, but you guys could also direct to, if you would like to see a development agreement come back before you, so you can see the terms of that and start working on something that, that may be a smaller sized bite. Disapprove today with, with the understanding that maybe we can work on something more of what your vision is without a total grip or, or turnover of anything. So it's not binding, but it gives, gives these guys something to work with. I mean, it's entirely up to you how you, or you guys can disapprove entirely and say, sorry, we just, it's too early in the game. But it is 100% of the commission's discretion.
I agree with all of that.
Huh?
I agree with all of that.
Okay.
So you want to make a motion to?
Public comment first.
Oh, can you guys, does, we have any public comment? Thank you, Mike. Yes, please come to the front.
My name is Julie Rich. I represent Brymar Construction and Faded Sage Development. And we would just like the opportunity to speak in front of the board today, as well as you gentlemen, and to speak in favor of an opportunity like this. I think that this would be an amazing opportunity for this area. Thank you for considering this location. So Faded Sage Development and Brymar Construction are some of the local developers here that are mostly involved in residential development. And so we wanted to present a little bit of information for you guys on what we have available. We feel like there's a lot of opportunities. We're already poised to be able to support a development such as this with residential properties. So featuring our specific properties that we have here, and we can get information for you folks as well. Faded Sage tentative maps are planned centrally around the Faded Sage Drive area and Painted Sage Drive area. Currently, we have nine lots that are available with development to them existing. And we have the opportunity for 34 additional for a total of 43 lots. So these would be a mix of manufactured homes and site built. It's zoned for either. The developers have kind of used some discretionary planning for those locations. There's already homes in that area, and we're currently experiencing a lot of requests for information in that area. We feel like that's well-suited to support the community, because it's just a few minutes right outside of town. Great location there. Everything that we have in that area is supported by existing utilities. So everything that we have there is just already ready to go. The next area that we would love to talk about with you guys today is the Turquoise Hills area, which is located near the golf course. That area is wonderful, because it's also adjacent to another commercial area that would be very helpful for, you know, smaller support to support the staff that you'd be bringing in. So grocery stores and different things like that. Now, this area currently has 30 lots roughly that are ready to be developed. And then an additional, so six lots currently planned. Total lots available would be 58 in that area. And there would be some additional needs to support the, the building of that location, namely a lift station. So that's something that we wanted to bring up, to just discuss to the public today. So trunk lines of 12 feet would be needed for that location as well. So that would be something to consider. And then also, we would want to put on the table an intersection. So we would need county and state unification to provide a safe intersection for that area in the future. Currently, right now, that's also worried by what's existing, but that would be the plan in the future. So just to let everyone know that there are local developers here in town that would be in support of an opportunity like this. Collaboration is what gets things done, and we would just be excited to, to work with you along those lines. Us, as the developers and the representative of them today, we're very, very keen on following the master plan that has been, you know, laid forth by, by Lander County. And so we would be definitely in support of making sure that all of that is supported. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, so my opinion is, you know, I'd like to see and talk and hear from other developers as well. So myself, I couldn't commit to, you know, exactly what I said. I, we need exactly everything that you brought up. We need housing. We need business. We need jobs that aren't gold-related in case something happens there. But I believe this rail park, right now, we're at the 90-yard line. We're right at the end, and we want to make sure that where we get that last bit, that we do it with the people that, that we're ready to go 100% with. And just with the information I heard, I'd like to hear more. So I'm not in a disapproval, rather a hard stop, but I would like to hear more from everybody. So not just, you know, your development, but I'd like to hear more, so.
So Sheldon, for the record, just real quick, and this is what I would advise from the Regional Development Authority standpoint, is whether or not you folks decide to begin drafting a development agreement with Summit Edge, I would definitely start drafting what that looks like with whomever comes to the table, because the, the more proactive that you can be in that regard, then the expectations are gonna be known and understood by whoever comes to this table, whether it's Taylor and his crew or anybody else. So that's just, just kind of a recommendation in that regard. And so it allows me to do my job so that I can express that to whoever comes to the table and, and takes interest in this project.
And if I may add, it's Taylor Bennett, one last item on this, if it's okay.
Sure.
Is that the development agreement is to protect you. It does not give us all power over this development. It does put us in a full-on gate control situation. In the development agreement, you will create, and we will work together to create the pathway in which you can have the interest that you have, that you're expressing, the concerns, can all be covered as a part of that. And so that, that is ultimately the purpose. So as Sheldon said, I think you guys drafting as to what that would look like from your end would be incredible. That's great. That's fantastic. But the end of the day, in no way do we expect that we are in full control of this. This is a team effort. And your voice will, will have to be heard as a part of that agreement. It will have to be, because that development agreement is you, and your role in everything. And it dictates ours as well.
Morning, Herr Martinez, county engineer, for the record. So, you know, I kind of look at this a little bit differently. And we've seen the presentation, and I appreciate you, gentlemen. You know, I don't, I don't blame you for trying to swing at it the way you have, and, and I totally understand. You know, I'm trying to look at this differently from, why can't we have multiple developers working in parallel towards the common goal? Because no one person, I think, is gonna do this. I mean, when we look at the buildout of 750 acres of rail industrial, we're talking 30 to 50 year spectrum. And so if we can try to maybe collaborate multiple developers and more of that team atmosphere that you're talking about, where there's not one gatekeeper, but really just a multitude of people going towards that common goal, I think we'll be able to focalize that effort and also see a much broader spectrum. And I think that will bring in a faster development and probably bring in more diverse development. And, you know, in any business portfolio, diversity is the key to success. And so I think that if they're willing to look at it differently, those smaller bites where there's not one particular gatekeeper, and maybe we look at a development agreement where it allows anybody to come in. And I don't understand, you know, why there has to be one person versus others. I think if we could have multiple people have the ability to go on that park, you know, if it talks about underwriting, you know, I think you could develop an agreement that says, yeah, you're absolutely able to develop here if you so choose. I mean, I don't think Lander County is really looking to block anybody out of the development. So in terms of underwriting, if you had the right to go into the park, I mean, I think that might be able to satisfy. There's tons of acreage. So to me, it would be great to look at it from that perspective. And that's the two cents that I have for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Sheldon, for that. That's, that's a, that's a good point. But I think that from the county's perspective and my perspective, I think that it may be more beneficial to have a kind of a loose master plan, as opposed to a developer agreement, because them, them agreements are so vast, depending on what industry comes in, that, that there's a lot of changes, right? Or, or concerns that the community may have on, on different developments that have to be addressed in different ways through them agreements. So I think that if, if maybe we develop a master plan, and this is what they're kind of proposing, is a, is some sort of master plan for this, for this rail park. And I hate to, you know, ask anybody, turn anybody away, like, like, you know, Commissioner Edgar said, it's, it's, I think, spot on. Maybe we come back with something more of what you guys are expecting on this master plan, that the commission could, you know, buy it off and in smaller doses, as opposed to that whole park. That's, that's a lot of park, and we have a lot of opportunities without even putting it out on UP's site yet. And them, them are the, we don't want to miss a great opportunity, but, you know, bird in hand and tree in the bush type of thing as well, so.
Also, another question. Instead of giving you the land, can we, like, entertain down the line a lease of like a dollar a year for X amount of years, and then come back and re-look at it then? I really just don't really want to just start giving away land, because that takes away everything that Lander County's been working towards.
You know, and maybe, maybe there's an agreement between us that that land is valued at a certain valuation down the road, right? There's a purchase price for that. I don't think anyone's contesting that they'll, that there shouldn't be a purchase price, per se, particularly on the future of the project. So to answer your question, yes, it's a very open road. Ultimately, at the end of the day, we're looking to you to kind of give us that feedback on what you're looking for. Right now, we don't know. We've had pretty open conversations, and we're encouraged to kind of come before you and, and put it forward as we have it. And that's what we've done today. I would, I would say this, I understand the need for multiple developers. I'm not adverse to that. But I would say this, is that there's a massive infrastructure that's gotta be put in here. There's a lot of costs on that infrastructure. Someone's gotta be owned on that. And how are you gonna divvy up those costs? How are you gonna prepare for that? How, who's gonna underwrite that? Who's gonna be responsible for what? And when you have multiple people buying for that, that's gonna become an interesting bit.
So your plan is that you would say Home Depot comes in and they want to do a warehouse there? You're gonna build that warehouse for them and lease it to them?
Depends, well, yeah. Typically, Home Depot's not looking to build it themselves. They don't typically own, right? They're not in the real estate business. So, yeah, we would build it for them. It'd be a build-to-suit type solution, and we'd stand that up for them. And they would fit within a particular way we'd set up the site. As you said, it would be in one of those areas. And whether it's smaller or larger, we'd find it within the right area. And yes, that's exactly what would be done.
Some free tip-ups.
Let's say somebody else is a developer, and they come in, right? And they want to build something there. And they want to take a certain section. Okay? Well, we're overseeing, ensuring that they're building within what the county wants. Or you're gonna be stuck micromanaging 15 to, maybe not 15, let's go with like three. Let's say it was three or four different developers on 300 acres. And where's the retention ponds gonna go? Who's thinking about that? Well, they're, they just got the smaller piece over here. What about the rest of the land? We don't want to get to a point where we've developed all this easy access up front, but we forgot what, what's gonna happen on the back. There's, there's, there's elements that come into a full-on development like this that we, that we have to think about on our level. And we have to understand. And when everyone's coming in, and maybe everyone's super helpful, and they, they work it all out together. But in the nature of business, not all the time does that happen. And the last thing we want is two developers fighting over who's responsible for what, and getting things backlogged. Having someone oversee it doesn't mean that they're making all the decisions. Just means they're holding people accountable.
Any other questions? No? Oh, sorry. Getting your hand up, Holly, I'm sorry.
For the record, Holly Priest, with the Chamber of Commerce, I wanted to clarify, just from my own understanding, are you asking for the land today? Or are you asking for a plan to move forward so that you're not investing all of your time and effort to be discarded for, not discarded, but just disagreed with for the option of having multiple developers come in, like was just suggested?
It's a great question. We're asking to pursue a development agreement with the county. That's our ask today, is that we pursue that together. We start interacting and having those conversations and work towards that.
So currently, then, there's no ask on the table to say, here, here's the acreage, do as you will. We'll drop a plan to agree. They're just asking for you to consider and move forward so that they are not investing their time willy-nilly. There appears, from the chamber's perspective, and I hope I speak for my board, they're pretty good with me, there appears to already be some concerns addressed, which you have, Dee, that you have, that you brought up. We want to make sure that we have infrastructure. We want to make sure that we are not overloaded as a county with having to provide septic and sewer and power and sidewalks. We have a developer here that said we have some tracks already available that have already gone through in previous commission meetings, that's been approved for, for development, both stick and modular. That, so they, some of the concerns we have as a county have been, there, there's some things in place already. Naturally, there, there's a lot to go together. And I, just from the chamber's perspective, this is just asking, can we meet and design something further? I would say, what is the risk involved in drafting, like you said, create a plan? Give us something to work from, so that we, so that we can know, what are your expectations? What do you need from us? Then this is what we can give you. I, my understanding is that's where they're at. Am I correct?
This is Taylor Bennett. That is correct. I would like to call into a correction. In our presentation, it does notate, and for reasonable, I can understand, the donation of the land. That would be a goal. But ultimately, that's not what we're asking today. We're asking what's here, which is, we are looking to proceed with the design and process of beginning a development agreement with the county. That's what we're asking.
For the entire industrial park, correct?
For those, for that phase one, as listed.
Just for phase one?
Just for phase one, the 300 acres, ma'am.
But they are not?
Not phase two, not phase three. We can talk about what milestones would be to achieve those, and what that would look like, and we shape that. We would like to do that. But phase one is what we're asking. To Bert's comment, we're not looking for the whole 800 acres. We decided to take his advice, and maybe I didn't present it very well, and I apologize, by size pieces. Phase one, 300 acres. Phase two, phase three, subsequent. And those details will be documented in the agreement as to what constitutes our ability to acquire those parcels of land and oversee. And at the end of the day, you're setting those goalposts.
I think that we need to table this and have come up with a plan from Lander County to what we can do with the rail park. Start setting up some, a, a master plan for that area, or at least some ideas of what we want to do there. Have you come back with us later, after we have actually figured out where we want to go? Because we're still in, do we actually have all of the, is it set in stone that we have the rail park?
It, yes, pretty much.
Okay. So now we're ready to move forward to start deciding what we're going to do with it, and how we're going to handle everything. And that's something that, as the board, the commission hasn't had a chance to look at all of that. And Shelby will probably end up doing most of that. And we need to have, give Shelby time to work on that.
So first, I owe you an apology, because I don't mean to misstate, but we didn't have any communication between our previous meeting and what was presented today. And what was presented in our previous meeting when we met was the same presentation, more or less, today with the land and how it was kind of laid out. And I didn't see it knocked down into, into them bite-sized pieces that, or perceived that as, as they asked today.
Well, that's what I asked.
But I, I also think that what you guys are asking, we're all looking at the same thing here without enough clarification for anybody to move forward on. So we don't want to steal any of your time or waste anybody's time. But, but I think that it would be beneficial if we came back with, with something that is a little more clear-cut for the commission to, to review and for us to understand as staff. And, you know, when, when I look at what they've presented today, it's on, on their map and stuff, like you see the, the data centers and the layout of that. Well, as, you know, you relayed the NV Energy, they, we spoke to them the other day. They said it's two years to get power to them. So that's a, that's two years out in that development. And the question would be, would the data centers fit better in the back far end of the industrial park that doesn't require any of the things? And that, these are some of the, some of the conversations that I think should be had before we come back to the commission and say, hey, the best things that are up front in rail park are these, and the best things that are all the way in the back are these. Maybe the cold storage, where you don't have to have, you know, the, the water and the sewer and the, all The the water and the sewer and the all the data to go with it. But if we can bring something back where all of us understand what the ask is and and I think that it's beneficial for them and for us. And and we can move forward and and my apologies for not reaching back out further. I just seen your presentation. It was the same one that that we got when we were when we were in my office and it didn't look like it changed. And so I didn't mean to misrepresent. The the bite sized pieces being smaller and then some of the benchmarks that I was expecting to see. In the presentation today with saying, hey, guys, if we don't have a data center built within two years, then we lose our opportunity at the next chunk of land. And we have, you know, um, how much of that is feasible? We don't know, but I think that them are good conversations to be had and then bring this back to this commission with some some solid benchmarks and an agreement.
I think so too. And that gives us time to figure out exactly which direction we want to go and and where. The county wants to actually stand on this because we're good with this too.
Yeah, I would like a little more time so we could get a loose master plan, kind of like we were discussing. So, you know, find out what exactly that we want. You know, what, you know, what our what our county wants, not necessarily what other people want to bring in. So it's it's about what we need. So, you know, and and getting the best people to do it. So that may very well be Summit Edge. So but but myself, I would like to come up with a master plan of what exactly that we want. Talk to everybody that's that's able to do this development and then go forward. That may be a. You know, and no agreement with Summit Edge. It might be a partial or even a full agreement with Summit Edge. So that's that's the way I feel about it.
Yes, we're not telling them no.
And it's really easy to get into a partnership. It's not easy to get out of one, so.
We're not telling you no. We're just not quite there yet.
That's okay. Yep, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is the direction to work with these guys and bring something back or is it?
Um, yeah.
Or you want like us to bring something back to the commission and then? Publish that for anybody else to come forward? How how would this?
Yes.
Yes, I feel that we need to have some kind of a plan in 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 place. Before we can actually go out and promote to anybody. We need to have a basic understanding of what we're looking at and how we want to do, you know. That one group that come in here that wanted proprietary for the entire thing and want us to give all the land, you know, that was our first taste of what's going to happen if we're not careful and we're not prepared.
Okay, so if if the commission doesn't mind, I'd like to reach back out to Summit Edge. With our with our development and let the offer them an opportunity to look that over and and come represent to the commission. I think that they've. Put a lot of time and effort into even being here today. Um, we certainly appreciate it.
Absolutely. I think you have a great plan. I just don't think we're quite there yet.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, um, one point one four. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the end out road closure permit for the. World Human Power Speed Challenge being held September seventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty five on highway three oh five. Holly, is that you? No, that would have been Paul.
I actually believe Arthur is going to come. Present on this. I will message him and see where he can be.
So we need to.
I'm going to go for it.
Put it on hold for now.
We'll wait and see if he's like closer if he's somebody's walked in here. Okay, while we're waiting, um, we are tabling one point five through one point ten. But we are going to go ahead and do one point eleven, right?
Yes.
Yes, that's okay.
Okay, all right, because Brian had asked to be here for this one. And so we're tabling all of the justice court stuff except for the um. Salary increase. So do we want to just go ahead and move on to that for right now?
One point one one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, one point one one for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove. Our agenda justice court, our agenda justice court justice of the peace salary increase.
Spencer Roberts, uh, our agenda justice of the peace. Hello, everybody. Thank you again for giving me this opportunity to come in, uh, present this to you guys. Uh, did you guys receive the backup and?
Yes.
Uh, my qualifications and all that. Okay. So I went through, sorry, I thought we were going to be discussing other stuff too.
Sorry, just.
Yeah, I didn't I didn't foresee any of this happening, so. Um. I went through and found some argument towards this because. It was my understanding when I ran that the current pay was going to be the pay. Uh, it was set at, I believe, just under ninety six thousand. I I provided in the backup that I put in January eighth. And then on January eleventh during the commission meeting, it was changed to the seventy one. And my understanding that the seventy one thousand was to be based off of all other elected officials. And I would like to point out that in past practice, it's always been. The justice of the peace was provided ten thousand dollars on top of the base salary of the other elected officials. Due to the other. Stuff that comes with it, you know, we're as the justice of the peace, we make really big decisions based off people's rights. Uh, sending people to jail or not sending them to jail. We're in the same arena as attorneys. Where the attorneys are arguing against us and we have to go through extensive amounts of training. Every year we have to be up on the laws every year. So I believe that was the reasons why. In the past, it's been ten thousand dollars on top of the regularly elected officials pay. Um, I did hear what the argument was towards leaving it uh, in the last commission meeting when I was away at a different one. Uh, so we did reach out to surrounding counties to see what the justice of the peace as a starting salary was. Uh, did provide in the backup for Humboldt County where it shows. Uh, for his first term in two thousand nineteen, he started at ninety four thousand. And then I highlighted the N R S for any after four years of experience as a running judge, how the increases are supposed to go. Based off of that. Uh, I did do some math based off of his base salary in two thousand nineteen. Uh, that being about six years ago, if you did the three percent cost of living increase per twenty twenty five. That comes out to approximately a hundred and eight thousand dollars as a starting wage for a a judge. Uh, reaching out to Elko, it was kind of harder to determine what they made as justice of the peace. Uh, it was based off of some hourly deal and we did the math and it came out to around a hundred and sixty thousand per year for their justice of the peace. And then I did go through and it did take some digging because everything wasn't quite in the. Uh, online because of how long ago it was, but I did look up the previous administration or the previous judge from. Denise Fortune and back in nineteen ninety, uh, Lander County paid their regularly elected officials thirty two thousand a year. And if you go off of the past presidents of ten thousand on top of that, you start the justice of the peace at forty two thousand in nineteen ninety. And only use the three percent cost of living raise, no, no, um, continuous years of service or anything like that, just three percent across thirty five years. It would turn out to be a hundred and eighteen thousand. So my ask to the commission is to just. Uh, crunch the numbers that I presented and uh, come up with a a salary that's fair for the position.
Comments?
Yeah, Judge Roberts, sorry. So I'm looking through the packet here and are you are you. Looking for, you know, a salary, what's kind of the the ninety four thousand one oh eight? Or is it the ninety five thousand eight forty one? Because I'm looking at the two different things here.
So I'm leaving that kind of to your guys' discretion. I do come with, you know, eight years of law enforcement experience that does absolutely transfer into this position. Um, I've been reading N R S. I've been using discretion. Even if I was attorney, an attorney, I'd still be going to the same exact trainings that I'm going to now because I'm going to trainings with attorneys who are. Kind of going through the same deal as me and having the same questions as me because it is a totally different position. I am asking that, you know, if if it was based off of, you know, the the Judge Bunch back in nineteen ninety, that it would be. Closer to the hundred and eighteen thousand mark. Um, if not, if that's uh, just. Too far out there, then I would ask for the previous administrative or previous judges salary, which is fair as well.
Which was?
The ninety six approximately.
After twenty five or thirty years, she made ninety six?
So uh, my argument to that, ma'am, is uh, she was a court administrator for twenty plus years. And only did six years as the justice of the peace. And I would say that the uh, law enforcement side transfers a lot better than court administrator. And I and I spoke with uh, Denise Fortune and she was in agreeance with that, that the thirty plus years was. Was kind of a stretch because that's not the same job.
When you applied for this position, you knew how much it was?
Uh, it was the ninety five eight.
Eight eight forty one?
That's that's what it was when I applied and.
I do need to clarify that the reason that it's changed since Legal hasn't spoke up, there is an N R S and it's attached to my backup and that N R S requires us. That the December before the elections that we change the salaries. He's talking about um, one commission meeting ten years ago where it was, there was a discussion that says that it was increased ten thousand dollars above the other elected officials. That was a one type thing. Every board is different. They're the ones that make the discretion where the salary was. This board decided to put it at where all the other elected officials were.
And I and I would like to add, since she brought that up, that it was stated in the backup that that's been the precedent precedence. Is that you've always given the ten thousand on top of that. Also, the N R S does state that it is in December. That it is supposed to be made, the decision's supposed to be made.
And it was.
And it was not made till January.
Because we had one meeting in December and it didn't make it and Legal advised us to put it on the first meeting in January.
So that that being said, it wasn't done per N R S and it was done after all the people put in for the position. And then it kind of felt like a rug pull because it was done after the fact that everybody had already put in.
It had nothing to do with anybody that applied for the position.
Right.
So you put in for it, because I wasn't here, I just want to get this clear with you. So you put in, you put in to be elected for a judge. And you. Thought it was going to be that price or that wage and then during, before you were elected, correct, they changed it.
Yes.
So you were still aware of what they changed it to when you put in. To run for J P.
I was I was made aware of the situation approximately a month after. I didn't know that it was going to be on the agenda because like I said, I thought it was going to be done in in December. Uh, at that time I had already paid, I'd already done the packet. I had already bought a thousand dollars worth of signs to place around town. I've already announced my running. And that on top of uh, as a deputy, I I I get uh, a few injuries. That I was going to be looking for other employment regardless, just because I couldn't carry the vest and the stuff anymore. So I figured I would just keep trying to do good in my community and and be a part of this, so.
So the only reason you ran was because of what you thought the salary was going to be?
No, that's just the my understanding of the salary when I ran. The reason I ran is because I wanted to make a big uh, difference in my community. And I I put in the backup what I have done in my short duration. I feel like I've brought a lot of value to this position. And I continue to work with my staff to bring our agenda justice court up to the new times. We are on Zoom. We're doing uh, the due process for everybody a lot better now. We've we've brought our agenda justice court up so far, so fast. And we've still got a lot of work to do and we're going to continue to do it regardless of what you decide my salary is.
Um, one other thing, I I believe it's S P one sixteen is is in legislation now, correct?
Yes.
Yes, it hasn't been approved yet.
No, but that that would, if that is approved, that would bring his wage up to eighty nine thousand dollars.
No, that is all the other elected officials.
All elected officials, but he would be an elected. Except the J P.
And the commissioners.
Okay.
You said you, commission sets the J P salaries.
So that has nothing to do with him.
Not unless you would like to make him part of the process.
But it's kind of been our policy that if what we've been trying to do for structure, correct, is to make sure all the elected officials get paid the same.
That's what this last board did in.
Yes, so if that bill did pass, then that basically would be what he would be getting if we're if we're going to follow that.
If this board.
Not today. I'm not saying today, but I'm just saying that's what would happen if that passed, correct?
Only if you guys made an agenda item and approved it that way.
And if that happened, then they would not get their three percent cost of living?
Still solely at this board.
Okay. So I do have one other thing. I do know that for a fact that in Humboldt, because I I've been doing a little research. They do set their justice of the peace salary at the same salary pay as their other elected officials, but they do not give the three percent cost of living increase.
That's something you have to put in for like Billy did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They don't even get it. And I will tell you for a fact, I have any contact with other counties. Humboldt County's J P is always set at all other elected official salaries. And they do not get a three percent increase or any increase unless their elected officials get it by statute.
So what do our elected officials here make?
What his salary is at.
Seventy one thousand and change.
Okay.
And we're talking, that's the bare minimum. I mean, that's is that where we're at?
I. Bare minimum? I'm sorry. I would I would like to add that, you know, when Max Bunch left, he was making a hundred and thirty plus thousand a year. And then Denise took over and then she got dropped to the ninety six. And then now that I'm here, it's seventy one. So it seems like inflation and everything else just keeps skyrocketing, but this position salary just keeps tanking. So I was wondering. In in order to get the best candidate for this position, if you were reaching for attorneys or somebody like that. Who would take the justice of the peace position at seventy one thousand when they could make that in their sleep? So to make it fair for the position, I I I ask that you raise it.
Max had thirty years?
Max did have thirty plus years.
Most in law enforcement, right?
Well, Max was a judge for thirty years, so he built that up as time went on during each election.
And and a lot of that.
You can't even base Max's salary on what you're doing.
And and that's that's why I took his salary from nineteen ninety and just added the three percent cost of living over a course of thirty five years. I'm not asking for a hundred and thirty.
But again, elected officials do not get costs of living. They only get them when legislature allows it.
I'm just I'm just stating that as a broad fact of the cost of living per salary for medium household incomes is three percent. And I'm just asking the commission find that it's fair to to be in this important of a position and this hard of a job with the liability. The death threats that I've already received, stuff like that. That's stuff that like the regular elected officials aren't aren't getting on a normal basis. So I would just ask you to take that all into consideration.
Yeah, for me, so so the last time this was on the agenda, it was it was a big mix up and uh, this did end up getting passed. Um, just but now that when this got put back on the agenda, so, you know, I I I feel like the 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 last time this was presented or last time we went through, we just. Me, I just didn't have a clear picture of what I was looking at, honestly. But now I, when this got put back on the agenda, I mean, it to me, it's 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 a lot more clear. And I actually went out in in the public and started talking to people about Judge Roberts. So. Because it's one thing of our, you know, now that we've had almost five months to see, I get there's an interim. Where you got to see if someone can prove themselves. I I understand that. But you look at, okay, after the intern's up, it's been five months. I mean, it's. Are we gonna, are we just going to be bare minimum, you know, and 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 I get that it's. That's that's what was agreed upon. We've all agreed upon things, but you know, there has to be, you know, with with. You know, what Judge Roberts said, there's inflation, there's cost of living. We, you know, seventy one thousand dollars for for the the weight that that position carries. I mean, you know, I have high expectations of people and I know everybody else does of Judge Roberts too. So I've actually went out and talked to people in in the community of of, you know, what their opinion is, Judge Roberts. And, you know, some people don't know what's going on. Some people are saying he's doing great. So so my opinion on this is, I don't I don't agree with bare minimum, you know, I don't I I believe you get what you pay for. And I don't I don't believe that that Judge Roberts is going to be do any better or less of a job if he's making seventy one thousand. But I do agree with the weight that that job carries, uh, the responsibility and and the way that you've been developing your team. You know, just even from the last time that this got presented. So I just did looking, I you know, did my own looking around and research and. You know, for for myself, I I do believe the merit increase is is warranted, so.
Um, I'm going to put one thing in there. So. We pay all of them the same amount and I I I think like I'm going to give the treasurer, for example, she has, she's responsible for a lot of our funds. And so she, I don't think she has any less responsibility than he does. I know he has a lot of people's lives in his hands. Um, I think she does too. And I mean, I'm sure when she goes to get somebody's. too, and I mean, I'm sure when she goes to get somebody's property and we're seizing it, they're not going to be happy with her either, and she probably gets similar disgruntled employees, or not employees, but customers, so I mean, I just don't want to compare that, like, that his job is so much harder because they have to deal with the public every day in every one of these offices, um, and they get that pay, I mean, I'm not saying that I will agree or disagree with him getting it more, but I'm just saying to compare that with those other employees and say that he's, has a harder job, I just don't think that's fair.
I, I would like to add to that as well, because, uh, similar with law enforcement, and I dealt with it for eight, eight-plus years, is I'm dealing with people on their worst days, people that have had their rights stripped from them, and they're looking for due process, they're looking for a fair shake, um, there's, I mean, the last, when's the last time a treasurer or somebody has been shot, I mean, just a few years ago, we've had the judge in Reno get shot, this happens all the time because of how dangerous this position is, we've had people flip over tables, we've had people threaten judges, I've been threatened in my first month in office, so, I mean, and the law enforcement side of it, you're dealing with people in a completely different mindset every single day, um, and, and I, I feel like that is justification as it is a little bit different than the other side of that. And then, to add to that as well, with the, uh, the attorneys that are involved with the same thing, they've received substantial increases in the, in just the last few years because of the extended hours and the holidays and the overtime, uh, the weekends, everything else that they're doing, uh, our public defender got a twenty-seven percent increase because of the added, uh, duties, and when Ms. Fortune came in here to argue that fact, she went from the eighty-eight to the ninety-six, and so I just feel like, even with the added duties, as the justice of the peace, I'm still going backwards from the other justices of the peace.
Do, do you get paid extra for those, when you do have to come in on Saturdays and Sundays?
There is a DIDS, but that's subject to be taken away at any time, it could be raised, it could, that, that has nothing to do with.
And who's in control of that?
What's that?
Who, who's in control of what you get paid for that?
Uh, I believe it's the state.
The state, okay.
Yeah.
So basically, if you want to go up to ninety-six thousand, you're looking at a seventy-four percent increase on your first four months.
I'm, I'm just asking that it be made to the, the fair wage that it was in December.
Which is ninety-six, according to what you said, yeah, so you're looking at a seventy-four percent increase.
I, I believe I, I bring enough value to justify that, yes.
If we went to three percent, you would get two thousand one hundred and forty dollars and eighty-three cents, which would increase, which is the cost of living, because you keep pushing cost of living, so that would push you up to seventy-three thousand five hundred and one dollars. At cost of living.
That would be effective in July, right, for the cost of living?
Well, you didn't put in for it on your budget.
I thought it was in there.
No, Billy J. put in for his separate, you didn't put in for that.
Maybe I didn't put in for it because it is the first term, I think there was something in there that it has to be twelve months of continuous service before you get the cost of living, I believe that's why. Uh, I, I know this commission had nothing to do with, I mean, everybody here had nothing to do with the fact that it was done outside of the NRS last December, I mean, it was, it was done with all different commissioners, I'm just asking it to be made correctly.
Mike and I were here.
No, you weren't, I watched the video, nobody, nobody on this panel was there, and made that decision, so.
Because I've been here a year. Um, what do you, Mike, I haven't heard anything from you?
I, seventy percent increase is huge to me.
It really is. I'm just not feeling a seventy-four percent increase.
So I'm, I'm just saying, since it was done outside of the NRS.
So I got another question, so when, when that ten thousand dollars that they added to it, the justice of the peace, when did that start?
I don't know when that started exactly, I just know that.
Mark your number into your smaller number, twenty-five thousand.
But that's how much an increase we're looking.
Right, but it's a.
So you're, you're looking, yeah, I get what you're saying, but.
Yes.
Jenny Martin, the court administrator for the agenda justice court, um, Lakin can probably clarify a little bit, I believe the DIDS addition for the bail hearing started approximately a year ago, a year and a half ago, um, that additional amount of money is for bail hearings that are taking place on the weekends, all I wanted to add on top of that is that the justice of the peace, in addition to that, has to be on call a hundred percent of the time, so not, not just the bail hearings, he also has to do search warrants, um, arrest warrants and other things, and that, that ten thousand dollars doesn't encompass that part, those, those parts of his job were in place before the bail hearings were put in place.
So if he's gone, who does that job?
Uh, we have to do, if he is incapable of doing his job, if he's ill, if he's out of the country, something like that, we have to, um, do a administrative order, and he gets to select, if he's able to, who does it, usually it's Judge Gandolphal.
Yeah, I've, I've been, so I had surgery in January, so while I was out, because I could have sat on the surgery table, whatever the case, I, I issued an order for Judge Gandolphal to take over my cases for that week.
Seventy-six percent increase.
Um, and, in lieu of that, so I've, I've taken steps to minimalize the need for that using Zoom, uh, got a stick-home computer so that we can do the job from anywhere, and when I'm in training, stuff like that, so even using the, the senior judge, which costs the county lots of money, has been brought to a very, very minimum.
Okay.
Can I make a recommendation to the commission, maybe?
Sure.
So we got Senate Bill one sixteen coming in, and if, if it does pass, um, regardless where you guys set him today, or, or where this ends, the likelihood of him coming back and asking to be set at that is, is probably pretty strong, I would assume. Um, so, with the way this item is worded, I think that it could be something that you guys pass today and, and save us the, the troubles of coming back, if you so wish, to set him at that, if that, if that is passed, to avoid coming back, as our judge just said he likely would be doing, and, uh, and then that might tailor some of the, some of the further communications on where, where it goes today, but the likelihood of it passing's pretty strong, and almost a hundred percent certainty he's going to come back and ask for that exact number, um, with, with what was stated here, so maybe that can, we can kill two birds with one stone.
And just motion to, um, allow the raise pending the approval of the Senate, bill passing, SB one-one-six?
To me, to me, that would save him coming back in front of us and us having the same conversation over, and, uh, and potentially, um, you know, I, I, I believe that, I'm not speaking for our judge, but I believe that he's still asking for an increase today, but it would, uh, it would save that future conversation, and, and I don't know that it would be unfair to do so.
Let me just.
Well, I don't think that would be unfair either, I think we were always trying to set a new precedent where all these elected officials were paid the same, and so, and I'm not saying you don't deserve more, because I know I, I've sat in your courtroom and, in the back, and, and watched you, um, so I mean, I'm, but I agree that it's going to end up to there, because that bill probably is going to pass.
So is my understanding of that bill, correct me if I'm wrong, Lakin, um, that they're setting a salary for the elected officials and then putting a cost of living every year on top of it, so if you do what you're requesting and set him with all the elected officials, he'll go to that salary and he'll get that cost of living every year without him having to automatically ask for it, it, it'll automatically take place, correct?
I just, I don't, I don't know that, it's his budget, he would still have to ask for the cost of living, um.
That's not what I'm saying, if they approve him to be set as the same as the, all the elected officials.
And I'm, and I'm, and I think that my, my proposal was setting at that wage, not at, not at, set at all elected officials for all of time, I don't know that that, that's even, that's even a thing.
I was just going to say, that's not possible, you can't just tie it, you know, because you'd be binding future boards.
Yes, you'd be superseding the power of the future elected officials, so I don't think that's even possible, but outside of that, the, the match of what Senate Bill one sixteen's going to be, I think that it, it's fair.
So if, if that bill's likely going to pass, and we go off of past president, precedents of the ten thousand on top of that, that'd be ninety-nine thousand, so I don't think what I'm asking for is.
No, we haven't actually agreed to the ten thousand either.
I'm just saying, that's the past precedence of the justice of the peace, so.
But that's also the discretion of each year of the commissioners.
Right.
Yeah, so, Lakin, following the record, so what would happen if, if Senate Bill one sixteen passes, we would budget that for all of the other elected officials, what they're setting that at, and then whatever the cost of living gets set at in that bill, we would put that in the payroll sheets every year, but he would have to ask for that in his payroll sheet as well to match the other elected officials. I would recommend that you guys pass his raise contingent on that bill passing, just because we are in the middle of a budget cycle, and we don't have more budgeted in this current budget year than what he's already getting paid, so if we pass it in the middle of a budget year, then we don't have.
And we can augment the budget accordingly?
We could, or you can see what happens with SB one sixteen, it's already passed Senate, so next is, it will go to Assembly, and then if it continues to pass, then it would be effective July, and we could budget that raise to start in July with all the other elected officials.
So, so correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying that there's not a budget for the amount I'm asking, but in the, uh, previous judge, she was already getting the ninety-six thousand, so it should have been budgeted for that year based off of, I took over January sixth, and the time being that it wasn't decided till, to January eleventh, right?
So we work into a budget cycle yet, when that was decided, so once they set it down, we budget it.
Numbers put to a chapter in order.
What's it?
Are the numbers put to the Senate bill that's coming up?
Yes.
What is it?
Specific amounts on the Senate bill for what each.
Eighty-nine thousand.
And each county has different amounts that can be paid, like, uh, Clark and Washoe, they get paid a lot more than, say, our small rural counties.
They do.
Yes.
Yes, and it's very specific in the bill.
So the ninety-five thousand, eight, forty-one, thirty-six is not a, what did we say, was it seventy-four?
Sorry, yeah, I.
But it's a, it's a twenty-six percent increase, so it's not.
It's still a huge increase.
And if you, and if you take that, say, a ninety thousand dollar, that's approximately twenty-two percent, so.
I got twenty-five.
Twenty-five, I'm not an accountant, Alicia.
I love numbers, I'm sorry.
But I'm saying it's approximate, and it's, you know, so, eh, with Senate Bill one sixteen, and this, this takes it like eighty-nine thousand, is that what I was hearing?
Yeah.
So, a ninety thousand dollar salary, a twenty-two pers- twenty-four percent increase, somewhere.
It's twenty-five, I'm telling you.
Twenty-five.
With the two-hundred dollar extra.
I mean, that's, is that close to the what would come out of Senate Bill one sixteen? I mean, it's, it's.
It's going to be eighty-nine thousand dollars for, for that.
Eighty-nine something, SB one-six.
Yep.
To be fair to all of the elected, other elected officials, uh, that salary bill is, part of the reason it's going to be so substantial is there hasn't been a raise in at least a decade, it may be more.
Spencer, I am curious, how much training have you had in that five months?
Uh, so I went to a judge orientation, I, I, uh, quit my job at the sheriff's office a little early so that I could go to this judge orientation, it was the first time that, that orientation had been put on because Nevada had received nineteen brand-new judges, so the AOC came together and put together a little course, unfortunately, it was cut short early due to, uh, a judge passing in class, but, uh, since then, I've gone to a judicial conference where I've met with judges all around the, the state, lawyers, the AOC, everybody, we've spent, uh, hours throughout that week of different trainings throughout, how to conduct yourself as a judge and how the proceedings work. I'm currently scheduled to get into, uh, Judge Judicial College that goes in October, uh, the only way I was able to get into that was I had to take a college course on evidence, and I was thinking, being a, a deputy, that shouldn't be that hard, because I've processed evidence a lot, but it was a totally different side of things, like I said, um, you gotta learn if it's admissible, you gotta learn, you know, with the AI and all the new technology coming in, there was so much to learn, but it, it was a very, very difficult class, most of it was in, in lawyer lingo, so I was like Googling every other word, trying to figure out how to read most of it, but, uh, I got through the class with an A, and we're, um, I'm headed to Judicial College this October, there is another conference that I'm scheduled to go to in June as well, so, and we're required every year to have so many, uh, hours of training for the judge, and if you, if you don't get those hours, they can remove you, so, uh, every year that I'm a judge, you are gaining value in me as the judge because of the training, so.
Okay, thank you.
Well.
Everybody's looking at that Senate bill, so.
Yeah, we're all looking at the Senate bill.
Well, you know, and, on the flip side of that, I would, you know, I would hate that, that my salary, you know, and, and what I was worth to the county, I would hate to that to be determined in future legislation, myself, you know, tied to some Senate bill, but I understand it, you know, but it doesn't mean we can't make a, you know, uh, make a salary increase today to, to match something, but, you know, to, to be at the bare minimum is, is, to me, there, I mean, a salary increase to me is, makes sense, but it's just a matter of how much and what everybody feels like, so. You know, personally, you know, I, oh, go ahead, Mike.
No, go ahead, Mike.
I mean, i- it's being evaluated, it's still, we're managing taxpayer funds, I mean, not off personalities or likes or dislikes.
Yes.
I mean, eh, that, that's a substantial increase of what's going to come, it might not have been, it might be the decade that nobody's got raises or, or anything else, but, I mean, I still have to, I still believe, I, I'm going to focus on that, that it's still taxpayer money regardless of what person or who it is.
And in, and in that regard, sir, I've, uh, I've done a lot of things to bring us up to the, the times which has actually put good use to taxpayer money, and it also allows fair access to justice to anybody in the country, so, uh, the steps that I'm making does minimize the amount that we're, we're paying a senior judge out of the budget to take over for me, because I am actually here doing the job, and while I'm away at trainings, I can log into my computer and do my job from the training, so we're not paying somebody else to do the same job I'm doing, so I am doing my best with the taxpayer money in that regard as well.
Alicia?
I'm reading still.
You're still reading. I kind of like the idea of waiting, and, because it's going to be passing probably within the next two to three weeks, but then you would have to wait till July one.
So that's, you know, another seven or three months.
So, I know you make it sound like seventy-one thousand dollars isn't that much, but there's a lot of people that survive on a lot less, plus you get the extra for the, um, weekends and things like that.
No, and on the flip side of that, you see, I mean, it's, it's, you know, public knowledge of what we all make, and you go through the list of how much, I didn't realize people were making these amounts of monies, and, you know, but it was determined that they were deserved, and, you know, when someone puts in a, in a, in a, you know, you know, a, a, when they want to get a raise, you know, we all see it, and we all review the facts that we have, and if, if it's determined and it's reviewed, that it's, that raise is warranted, we, we approve it, you know, not, not according to a Senate bill, or not according to anything, if we think the person's worth the money, we, we approve it.
Yeah, but there's always a cause.
And, and also, when I was a deputy, my base salary was eighty-six thousand, and that's base, uh, with overtime and stuff like that, I could easily get a hundred and fifteen to a hundred and twenty, and I, I have in the past, and being as a judge, I understand I'm not out there getting, you know, guns pulled on me again, but, uh, I am in a dangerous position, and I am at a, what is considered a, a higher ranking position as well.
So if I'm hearing this correctly, if Senate Bill once, or SB one sixteen goes through, that'll put it to about eighty-nine thousand, is that what I was hearing?
Mm-huh.
Okay.
I'm looking for that exact amount.
I was looking for it, so if we gave him the, um, eighty-nine thousand now, then we would have to give him the other increase when the, uh, another increase, when the bill passes?
And so by giving.
No, judges are different, so, they're not, he's not actually in that Senate bill.
You don't have to, you, as has been discussed, that's sort of been a policy that the board has adopted over time, but you're not bound by that, the only thing that you're bound by is whatever salary, whenever you increase salary, that's it, you, you can't decrease it during, during the term, okay? So, that's your only real guideline from the NRS, um, the rest is, you know, expectations of the community and whatever else goes into what you think is right.
So that's why they changed it back to be unit with all the other elected officials at start, correct?
So we're mixing the judge and, and elected officials, so you guys set his salary.
Right.
Right.
Completely independent of this bill, this bill, the only, the only thing that it's tying together is the fact that you guys are trying to make all the elected officials balance throughout the, the county, and you pay everybody the same, and that was why my recommendation was to, you know, maybe pass this to that, so he isn't back. And that was why my recommendation was to, you know, maybe pass this to that so he isn't back here and we're having the same conversation. And then we're discussing the raise that he's proposed to get today. More on top of that because I think that he would probably, you know, you, we just gave you a raise while you're asking for more of that. All of that comes up where in the past, we've always just matched all the other elected officials, so.
Yes.
And what did Denise make when she left?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
Yes.
I just wanna say that, to point out kinda what you were just hit on. The difference in statutes is because his job is different. So he's not a regular elected employee per se. He's elected like you guys are, but it's not the same statute. You use the balance of that statute because it's our realizes you need someplace to start as a guide. And that's why the other counties are using that too. But you don't have to. So being stuck on that bail getting passed is completely, I don't know. I don't think that's a base to use for a judge's position, especially for the things that he has to view and review. Because if you're gonna take somebody's stream away, that's probably more than any of your other elected officials has a right to.
I'm not saying we're stuck on that, I'm just saying if it passes, what we are saying is every elected official makes the seventy-one thousand three hundred and sixty now, or when they come in as a new elected official, that, that's what we're saying is, then if, of course, if those guys, if there's a new elected official and that elected official's gonna make eighty-nine thousand, it would only be fair to make it uniform that he made that too. So personally, I'm not stuck on that, but I'm just saying that that would be the fair thing to do. I just wanna be fair across the board.
Yeah, if historically, that's what it's always been and all the elected officials make basically the same amount.
And we have to also, sorry, we also have to remember we have a judge in Austin.
Yeah, and he makes forty-four.
Um, and that, that may be a consideration, you know, I mean, moving forward. It's not, it's just something else I think we should think about.
One more question. So what you, you, you've saved costs by using Judge Gendoffel. Does he get paid extra for coming over here and do that, or is that just, is that?
It just, it just comes out of his.
It's his regular wage.
His regular, it's his regular wage.
So how much, I'm just curious, how much have you saved by using him and not using an outside judge, a senior judge, or?
So like I said, um, I've only had to do that one time so far, and that's because of my surgery.
Right.
Um, I, I don't know what the calculation would be, but I know that it was a, a substantial amount when we were paying senior judges.
Yeah.
Um, but that being said, using him cuts the cost and then being able to remotely work anywhere in the country saves us.
Cause you consume a lot, right?
What's that?
You consume a lot of those, like your bail hearings and stuff?
I do, I do every one of them.
Okay. So you, when, those are on a Saturday, you just zoom them? And it's like, if someone like me wanted to come watch it, I'd have to jump on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we send out links. Uh, we're creating a Facebook account to be able to get our information out to the public. Uh, we're working with the AOC on the rules and regulations on that. We're trying to get a, uh, website built so that people can go on there and understand the court processes. They can see what our court schedules kind of look like. They can see, uh, where our Zoom links are and, and be in the know of what we're doing to be more transparent and to get us up to date. So we have a lot that's going to be happening in, in my first term that we're working very diligently towards.
Right, because they change things a lot. So one more thing, so when you go to go to that judge, you said you're gonna go to another, um, education, right? So would you use him for the, as well?
Uh, no, so what we've been doing is we're able to move or, you know, manipulate where our court cases that are really important land. So if I can put them outside of that week that I'm at training, then if anything comes up, a bail hearing, an emergency TPO, anything like that, then I have my take-home computer that I can open up and do my job at.
Thank you.
Good. I'm good, so, uh, I don't got nothing else.
Any other public comment?
Sorry, I forgot my, uh, my glasses. My name's Arthur Ayton, for the record. Um, I'm not here as a representative of my employer, but in my professional world, I deal with the Argentia Justice Court quite extensively and send quite a bit of activity through there. And in my professional conduct, I found Judge Roberts to be exemplary and as good as any other judge out of the other counties. And he has, he and his court have done everything that they can to make my job and my interactions with them as good as possible. I reference a lot of people out of state and out of the country to the court, and I have been very smooth in their operations. And as a citizen of Lander County and having been here for my entire life, I've only contacted the Justice of the Peace and the Sheriff at two o'clock in the morning to get warrants, to get law enforcement things. I deal with all the rest of the county elected officials, Monday through Friday, eight to five. He has to take my call at one o'clock in the morning. He has to take my stuttering, sleep-deprived verbiage and kind of coalesce it into something that's there. In the crisis, he has to be available. Everybody else, I have to wait until their office hours. That extra time and extra effort, if we were on this side of the bench, if I'm putting extra time and effort effort, I expect extra pay.
Thank you.
And to hi- to add to his working with law enforcement, I got us onto a, uh, program called Cloud Gavel with the help of Arthur Ayton and the Sheriff. Uh, so this allows for our deputies to be out in the field and be able to get a search warrant for something with fleeting evidence or something very important within a few minutes. Instead of calling me, waking me up, me calling my staff, paying overtime for my staff to come out, we review it, we have to have three ways of recording it, you know, going through all the motions that could take hours, sometimes days. Could be done in a few minutes now. So they go onto this, uh, Cloud Gavel, it's all secured. They can't, if they have probable cause for a search warrant, they can type it up. It has all their information put into it already so that it's super efficient. He can send it to me, as soon as it sends to me, it pops up with my phone number. He gives me a call, two in the morning, whatever the case, hey, I got a warrant in your, your box, go check it. I take my take-home computer, open it up, I could review the, the warrant and decide if there's probable cause or not. And this, this helps law enforcement, but it also helps protect our citizens. So I'm remaining down the line where if they have, they believe they have probable cause to search somebody's residence or their car or anything like that, and I'm able to look at it in, in five minutes and understand that, you know, there is PC. Cool, you got a warrant, now they have a court document that solidifies their case to build stronger cases, to get better prosecutions. But it also, on the other hand, that if I look at it within that small amount of time and I view it and I say, there's no PC here and I decline it, well, now we're protecting our citizens from their Fourth Amendment right being violated as well. So those are just, that's just another thing that we've added to the Argentia Justice Court to bring us up to the times.
I'm just curious, and this might be off-topic, but when you have to do like something after hours, like Officer Ayton said, um, does your staff have to help you with that at night too, or no?
Um, so they're responsible for doing all the paperwork side of it and, uh, to be the buffer between me and other people to make sure that I'm not getting off track from being down the line. So in some circumstances, yes.
They gotta go in early in the morning with you sometimes?
So again, with the take-home computers and the Cloud Gavel system and all that, sometimes I just gotta give them a call and they can do the same.
But they're still getting up out of bed and having to do the job in the middle of the night?
Yes.
Okay. Do they get a raise for that?
That's what I'm asking for.
The part that was tabled.
Yeah.
So, okay, so any other discussion? All right, um, any more from you guys?
So if, I'm, I'm still a little confused on, on SB one sixteen. How, how, if we present a, a merit increase, how, or a raise, how, how does that tie into it? And how could we word this correctly, Bill?
So that it comes out as the same amount as what the elected officials will receive.
You asking how to word this?
Well, I mean, how, how to make this so, uh, because if, if SB one sixteen passes, is, does that automatically make Judge Roberts making a new amount? Or it sets it for public, okay, elected officials?
Yeah, I would have to come and reargue.
Yeah, elected officials other than him, because he's a judge, so it's different.
Because we set his salary. And historically in the past, they've always kept it at the same amount as the elected officials.
Yeah, so, you know, the discussion we're having, you know, it's, to my opinion is, is, you know, we're, we're trying to determine, you know, if, if a salary increase is, is merited, if it's not merited, how much? It seems like the ninety-five, ninety-five thousand eight forty-one might be a little bit of a jump, is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I'm hearing.
You know, and I, I think that's, you know, in the twenty-seven percent, somewhere around there. What if it was in the, you know, ninety, ninety-one thousand, that's, that would be.
I'm thinking we go to eighty-nine, exactly what the rest of them are gonna get.
So one more question for HR. So if, if we do eighty-nine, then he would still be, could get a three percent cost of living? Or we have to do that every year with him?
He has to budget that.
Okay, only the other elected official to be automatic if that did pass, okay.
Yes.
So he'd have to put, yeah, put that in your budget?
This year Billy J, or Judge Gendoffel, sorry, uh, Judge Gendoffel put in for it in his budget.
Okay.
So, and in the future, that would be what you would do also. So do we have a motion of any kind?
I have a motion. I'd like to approve the Argentia Justice Court of the Peace salary increase to eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Would you guy, are you guys considering the, the addition to that if SB one sixteen is passed? So he doesn't have to come back and reargue that, or would?
Isn't that what we're doing?
Or is that what SB?
It's eighty-nine thousand three hundred and seven.
Okay, so you wanna match that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's why I wanna make sure that I word that correctly. So, uh, so I'll approve the Argentia Justice Court of the Peace salary increase to eighty-nine thousand three hundred and seven dollars. Um, now would I word that depending on the outcome of SB one sixteen or not? Okay, so just, uh, salary increase of eighty-nine thousand three hundred and seven dollars.
Up to.
Up.
Because the way you made the motion made it sound like we were adding that to what he has.
Okay, so.
And I need to know when you're gonna make it effective.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve Argentia Justice Court Justice of the Peace salary increase up to?
Yes.
Eighty-nine thousand three hundred and seven dollars, um, effective next pay period. I mean.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'm just, I'm thinking.
So we'll have to modify the budget.
That's what I'm, that's what I was thinking, because what did you put in your budget for your wage for twenty-twenty-six? Or twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six in July?
I don't have it in front of me, I'm not, I'm pretty sure.
Do you have an additional position in your budget that is not filled, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
So I think that's.
Absorb that.
Oh, I thought they did.
No.
No, I thought he removed it.
Or time, uh, bail acquisition.
No.
No?
Okay, I, I apologize, I thought they did.
Uh, for the twenty-sixth budget, it's set as, at what he's making now, because he didn't ask for any increase in that.
So we'd have to adjust that.
Yeah, so if you set it for now, it would be out of what we have budgeted. It just depends on the ending numbers, if we would have to augment, so we'd have to wait until we get closer to the end of the year to know that. But we would want to change it in the final budget for next year's budget cycle.
And we have time to do that.
Yeah.
And I believe with the cost savings the judge has presented, that it's probably still within his budget. It would just, it would just be an overrun in, in his, for his salary. But it would be within the budget, the overall budget.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, second. Um, any more comments? Any more public comment? Okay, then I'll call for the questions, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Uh, can I just ask a quick question? Why we are not going to go forward with the pay scale for the employees at Argentia Justice Court?
It's to be.
Is there a reason?
Commissioner Hellman addressed it, that I asked for them to be tabled because Commissioner Arch requested to be part of the discussion and he couldn't be here today.
Okay, so there's a reason he needs to be here specifically for their, that.
The first two items are based off of an MOU from the policy that this board approved at his request. And depending on what they do with those first two items, then would move into the other four items.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, so did we get the?
Road closure.
What's that?
Well, he's straightens here, so we'll go back to the road closure for the.
Yeah, that was what I said, do we have the person here for the road closure now?
So it's one point, one point.
One point four, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the NDOT road closure permit for the World Pow- World Human Powered Speed Challenge being held September seventh through the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five on Highway three oh five.
Arthur Ayton, for the record, this is the same human powered speed challenge that we have done for the last twenty-plus years. It is even in part of our signs that we advertise throughout all of the communities. For reasons to come to Battle Mountain is this road closure. And to obtain the DOT road closure permit, I need the Commissioner's signature. It has already been approved by the Highway Patrol and by the Land County Sheriff's Office and the Land County Volunteer Fire Department.
Any questions? Any comments? Any public comment? Okay, now I'll obtain a motion.
Motion to approve the NDOT road closure permit for the World Human Powered Speed Challenge being held September seventh through the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five on Highway three oh five. And authorized the chair to sign.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's see. Item number one, point one-two. Discussion on possible action to approve, disapprove authorizing the county manager to set up a tri-county meeting with the Mineral County Board of Commissioners, the Pershing County Board of Commissioners and the Lander County Board of Commissioners to enter into a tri-county agreement with all parties regarding funding for the eleventh Judicial District Court of the State of Nevada, court administrators and staff, court services, youth and family services or juvenile departments, specialty court programs and any other expenses of the court. This is what we talked about when we were doing the.
We all are aware of what it is.
Well, I'm just, I'm just, sorry. Waiting to see if anybody had any comments. Nothing?
Just looking for direction. We'll, we'll try to gather them up and would you guys like it here in Lander County, I'm, I would assume, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Of course.
Yeah. All right, so do we need a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the county manager to set up a tri-county meeting with Mineral County Board of Commissioners, the Pershing County Board of Commissioners and the Lander County Board of Commissioners to enter into a tri-county agreement with all parties regarding funding for the eleventh Judicial District Court of the State of Nevada, court administration and staff, court services, youth and family services and juvenile departments, specialty court programs and any other expenses of the court.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, two correspondence, correspondence reports and future agenda items.
I think the discussion went today to, uh, for start a plan on this. Really are just kind of our ideas and what we want. I agree with the discussion today on giving it to one group this early, that's, that's a big move. So, I would leave, Bert, my direction to Bert to start that process.
You bet we'll bring back a master plan for you guys to review and, uh, give it an approval of. And then we can start entertaining individual, uh, MOUs, I think, if I understand that correct.
At one time, we had that guy come and make the presentation about using storing containers in there on one section of it. Have we heard anything worse from him?
Yes, um, they're waiting on some of the new administrations tariffs that are being put in place. And I think that that's having an effect on the shipping containers. And so that's kind of the hold on, on the move on that right now.
And see, and that was in the back of my mind through the whole thing, that we already had people that didn't want free land. And, uh, and we'd already talked with, so. Alicia, do you have anything?
Nope, I just got stuff for public comment when you get to there.
Okay, um, have we started to go out to bid for the center there in Austin?
Would, would you guys like us to bring a full-on update on that?
Yes, that would be awesome.
That'd be better to fit, it'd fit you.
Yeah, and then where are we at on, with the insurance on the youth center building?
Uh, we did have another meeting with them just this week. And they're, have an architect coming out, looking at the existing building to tie together. We, uh, Sean, thanks to Sean, um, reached out to an individual that wouldn't return the calls back. I think he previously was employed with Core and, uh, had a little reservation on potentially coming back to Lander County. Um, from, from our courthouse lawsuit, obviously, if you guys recall. Um, when we reached out and he knew that he was dealing directly with us, he was happy to show up. And so he'll be out there to take a look at it and we'll be back with some report.
You gotta do repairs on that, the insurance company has to do repairs on the building next to it.
Correct, tying them two together and.
Well, actually, the wall has to be repaired.
Yep.
They've got a piece of plywood stuck in there right now.
The, the problem with that was is the, we only have one masonry that was gonna come do that. Otherwise, it'd have to be done with, uh, timber and we're trying to avoid that.
Right, because of the historic value. So, okay. Any other items? No, I see you're working on the, um, water. No, I see you're working on the, um, water system.
Yes.
Looking good, they got the.
Yes, the booster station will be, will be coming.
The Jake break works really well, they're going down Main Street. So, all right, um, public comment?
All right, I got a couple things, so, I just want to make sure this is on the record, we're working on the timestamp, so that people in the community can look at the meeting on YouTube, and they'll be able to tell what a, agenda item is coming, awesome, thank you, and one more, um, we are all concerned about Spencer's safety up there, so I have been in your courtroom, and I know for a fact somebody walked through your metal detector with something in their pocket, and I could have easily walked around, but, um, so I just think that you might want to look into that as a safety factor, since that's one of your big concern, you know, maybe looking at a better one.
From, from my understanding is, we got a grant for those, and we're still trying to work out all the budgets on them, um, we are working on a proposal for the safety and security of the building, and it will be brought to you at a future date, we're trying to get everything, uh, in line, everything, all of our arguments set up, and we will be coming to the commission to, uh, seek better.
Yeah, that needs to be improved.
Yeah, because we've, we've got law enforcement here, uh, we've got my bailiff, uh, I, I have a lot of history on the SWAT team, stuff like that, so, we are, we are looking into.
Yeah, yeah, because the bailiff's inside when, when court starts, like I came in the other day after court started, so, yeah.
Yeah, we have a lot of holes in, in the thing that we can't discuss.
Right, you know, I get that, but yeah, that needs to be improved.
We will be improving it, we'll, we'll get to it, thank you.
Okay, any other public comment?
Yeah, I got one, um, I just want to say thank you, uh, to our county manager, Bert, um, I got, I had a call a few weeks ago on, um, you know, neighbors not getting along, there was a, a huge mess on one piece of property affecting another one, and, you know, creating a, a very, very big tension, and, you know, I, I came to Bert asking for help, and, you know, see how we could get this resolved, and, uh, you know, Bert took it upon himself, I, I saw, I don't think these things are heard sometimes, I just want to make sure it's heard, that not everything, you know, from our leadership, when it goes out into the, into the public, is negative, so, I know Bert probably didn't want me to say this, but I'm going to say it, but, I just want to say thanks, Bert, for helping out, Bert was instrumental, he went out and he took care of getting dumpsters arranged, this landfill mess was so bad, that it was affecting, you know, the rest of the neighborhood, so, um, he went out, went out himself, got the, got the dumpster, got the piece of equipment, and by the time I got out there at ten AM, it was almost cleaned up, Bert got it all cleaned up and took care of it, um, sometimes these properties get to a point where people can't even help themselves, and this was, this was one of those areas where, you know, our, our leadership steps in and, and, and just wants to help, you know, and so, you know, now, uh, two days later, I'd seen, um, some people that were helping with the cleanup project, they were taking stuff to the landfill, so, it wasn't just that our county manager stepped in, these people continued cleaning their property, it's just sometimes these, these situations get so bad, it's just sometimes you just don't know where to start, and so I just want to say thank you for that, Bert.
I think we should put him in the, the newsletter with a picture, like he does the rest of us.
He wouldn't let me take this picture.
Yeah, I'm taking one.
I had my camera phone, and I asked, and he said no, so, but I, but I just want to say thank you for that.
Yeah.
Okay, Aaron?
Commissioner Homie, just to answer your question, so the project is out to bid, it bids May seventh, we have a pre-bid meeting here at the county on the thirtieth of this month, I suspect the contractors will ask for another week, because it's a pretty in-depth project, we gave them thirty-four days to bid the project, so they may ask for an extension, I don't know, I haven't seen that yet, uh, but to answer your question, it is May seventh, this is the current bid opening.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Because I've had lots of people ask me about it, they're kind of excited, so. All right, any other public comment? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.